We are open to the public.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being patient. Madam Clerk.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10-4-6 at SEC, notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act and recent regulations issued by the state of New Jersey, the following procedures will be in effect for public comment during this remote public meeting of the city council. The public shall have an opportunity to per comment during the designated public portion of the meeting. The time period for public comment is limited to three minutes for each speaker, and no person may address the council more than once, except for speaking during an advertised public hearing for an ordinance. At the time designated for public comment, the mayor or other presiding officer of the council will recognize one speaker at a time. Speaker must identify himself or herself by full name and whether or not he or she resides in Hackensack. No other member of the public is permitted to speak unless recognized by the presiding officer. And other remote attendees may be muted during the time if necessary to eliminate background noise. Meeting attendees shall exhibit appropriate demeanor during the meeting as required by section thirty seven fifteen of the city code. In the event any member of the public becomes disruptive at any time, that individual may be muted by the presiding officer and will receive a warning that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking or removed from the meeting entirely. Zoom meeting platform has a texting function. However, this is to be used only for the purpose of advising the city's IT staff of any technical concerns or issues. The public may also submit written public comments to be audibly read into the record by the city clerk during the public portion of any remote public meeting of the city council. Comments can be submitted by regular mail or by email to ACB@hackensack.org. Comments received less than five hours before the start of the meeting may be carried to the next meeting. Any person who actually speaks during the public comment portion of a remote public meeting may not also have have a comment read into the record. City clerk will stop reading a written comment into the public record once it reaches the three limit, three minute limit. Duplicate written comments may be summarized and noted for the record in a consistent manner.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Councilmember Talia.
Yeah.
Councilmember Carol.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
Hey John, no fool here about Kentucky.
Yes. Got the flag, Frank?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay, there are no proclamations and presentations at this time. I would like to have a moment of silence for all the people who either died or were injured or lost their property in Kentucky and surrounding states due to the horrible tornadoes we had last week. The devastation, I saw the pictures, the devastation was unbelievable. So if we could just bow our heads for a moment, please. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the Cal executive and the regular meeting of December seventh. Twenty twenty-one. Second.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Bye. Okay, Vinnie. City managers report. Is that you there?
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. I apologize. As we are, as we all aware, COVID nineteen cases have been on the rise. For testing locations and up to date information, please refer to hackensack.org/covidnineteen. I know today our health department scheduled two testing times and locations at the civic center by City Hall, and those will continue going forward in other parts of the city. Reminder, this holiday season, the mayor and council is offering free parking on Main Street and Anderson Street. From now until January second, pleased to continue to support all our businesses and local restaurants. Another reminder in honor of the city's hundredth anniversary of the naming of the city of Hackensack, there are complimentary pens honoring the anniversary. They're available in the clerk's office and at the front desk of City Hall. The gingerbread house contest deadline is twelve twenty-four, Christmas Eve. Please refer to hackensack.org for details, and the winners will be announced at the next council meeting in January. That's all I have, Mayor. I just want to wish you and the council and all of our residents and their families a Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy and safe New Year.
Thank you. Same to you. Thank you. Okay, new business, resolution five eleven dash twenty-one.
A resolution five eleven dash twenty-one, final adoption of ordinance number sixty twenty-one. An ordinance to amend chapter one seventy of the code of the city of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic, to add a new handicap parking space in section forty-nine point two. Parking for the handicap. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public could like to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name to the clerk. Any hands raised, Frank?
There are no hands raised.
Need a motion to close to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Vocal.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number sixty twenty-one has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution five twelve dash twenty-one.
Final adoption of ordinance number sixty-one twenty-one, an ordinance to amend chapter thirty-two of the code of the city of Hackensack Police Department with respect to special law enforcement officers. This now ordinance now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
St. Louis.
And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who would like to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance only, please give your name to the clerk.
There are no hands raised.
Motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
St. Louis.
And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
St. Louis.
And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Are you up? Where are we at there?
Five thirteen. Resolution five thirteen twenty-one.
Okay, I thought you had to read a little bit more. All right. Resolution five thirteen dash twenty-one.
Final adoption of ordinance number sixty-two twenty-one, an ordinance to amend chapter one seventy of the code of the city of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to add a dedicated left turn on northbound Prospect Ave onto westbound Pacific Street.
Need a motion, please, to open to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance only, please give your name to the clerk.
We have one hand raised. It's Annette Janikowski.
Okay. Ms. Janikowski, how are you?
Yes, good evening. Good evening. Um, Annette Janikowski, condo co-op advisory board. I would like to thank the city council and the city manager for this ordinance and for the left turn designation. As you know, it's a very dangerous intersection, and this is one of the solutions that we we were hoping would come about. So I thank you for that on behalf of the board. Is there any idea about when the lines and the arrows will be painted on the road indicating the dedicated left turn?
Yes, Ms. Ms. Janikowski, the it's scheduled for the beginning of January. The road has to be, it has to be sprayed with what's called thermoplast, which is like permanent markings on the roadway. And they have to have to adjust it based on the temperatures because if it's below freezing, like it is, you know, was today at some point, they can't do it, but it it's gonna happen. It's gonna be scheduled probably right after the New Year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And on behalf of the condo advisory board, I wish all of you a very happy and healthy holiday. Thank you.
Same to you and the board. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public?
There are no more hands from the public.
Motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Motion to adopt.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilman Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number sixty-two twenty-one has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution five fourteen dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing tax refund for state board judgment and duplicate payment.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five fifteen dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing the cancellation of federal and state grant balances.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five sixteen dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing additional accrued time payout of sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-two cents to Police Lieutenant Robert Lopez.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
St. Louis.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five seventeen dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing transfer of twenty twenty-one budget appropriations.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five eighteen dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services to Negliya Engineering for Third Street CDBG grant road resurfacing.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilman Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five, where are we at? Five nineteen dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services to Negliya Engineering for Summit Avenue NJ DOT grant road resurfacing.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five twenty dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing the awarding of a co-op contract for certain sanitary sewer improvements to Joseph M. Sensary, Inc.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five twenty-one dash twenty-one.
Resolution awarding change order number one to DM Mar Architecture for Building Department Relocation Project.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five twenty-two dash twenty-one.
Resolution awarding change order number one to New Prince Concrete Construction for Clay Street Combined Sewer Separation Contract Number One.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five twenty-three dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing award of change order number two to JC Contracting for Traffic Signal Improvements at Main and Mercer Street.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five twenty-four dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing award of change order number three to HBC Company, Inc. for Main Street Traffic Signal Improvements.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five twenty-five, five twenty-six dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing award of change order number three to Desmond Design Management for Atlantic Street Parking Garage periodic inspections.
That was my mistake. That was five twenty-five, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five twenty-six dash twenty-one.
Resolution awarding contract for Columbus Park Project.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five twenty-seven dash twenty-one.
Resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the city of Hackensack and Hackensack Public Works Supervisor Group for the period of January one twenty twenty-two through December thirty first twenty twenty-two.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution five twenty-eight dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, as we go into consent agenda, we have a couple of issues. I have a conflict on five thirty-four dash twenty-one. We're gonna pull that. Jerry, you have an issue with.
Five thirty twenty-one.
Five thirty twenty-one. Okay, and we're also going to pull five thirty dash twenty-one because I've been told by the city attorney that we have a legal issue that needs to be looked in on that. So those two will be pulled, so five thirty-four and five thirty
twenty-one.
Dash twenty-one, so. Anybody else, any any other conflicts? No other conflicts? Go ahead, just pull those two.
Okay, do you want to do the vote on five thirty-four, resolution authorizing raffle license for HUMC?
That we have to vote on. The other one's being pulled.
Got it. So the following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one most motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and consent agenda items will be reflected in full of the minutes, including any exceptions and or additions. The consent agenda consists of resolution five twenty-nine to resolution five thirty-seven with the exception of five thirty-four twenty-one and five thirty five twenty-nine twenty-one, resolution authorizing endorsement of proposed Bergen County Community Development Grants for twenty twenty-two. Resolution five thirty, we're pulling, resolution five thirty-one twenty-one, resolution authorizing boarding committee reappointments and appointments. Resolution five thirty-two is resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Prospect Avenue Pedestrian Safety Project fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Resolution five thirty-three is resolution authorizing participation in the nationwide settlement agreement with Johnson and Johnson, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen to resolve claims involving their role in the country's opioid crisis. Five thirty-four, we're pulling to vote on separately. Five thirty-five is a resolution authorizing second amendment to lot C parking lease agreement with redevelopment governing temporary parking during construction. Resolution five thirty-six is a resolution concurring with the planning board's redevelopment investigation findings regarding block four twenty-five, lot one, which is one twenty-three Anderson Street, and designated designating it as an area in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation purposes. And resolution five thirty-seven is a resolution authorizing and requesting the planning board to undertake a preliminary redevelopment investigation to determine whether delineated area of block four oh two, lots twelve, sixteen point oh one, and sixteen point oh two, which is three sixty, three seventy-four, and three seventy-five Main Street, satisfies the criteria for designation as an area in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation purposes.
Okay, need a motion to adopt the consent agenda as it was just read.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino. Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need resolution five thirty-four dash twenty-one read.
Resolution five thirty-four dash twenty-one is a resolution authorizing raffle licenses.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilman Carol.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
You got it stained, right?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm stained. I was fixing my papers, so I used to say an I abstain on five thirty-four.
Don't worry, I got your back.
Thank you. Okay, need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call, all in favor.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody from the public who would like to speak?
Yes, we have. Sorry, we have one hand raised. Carolyn Davis.
Okay.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Hello, Ms. Davis.
Hi, Reverend Carolyn Davis. Frank.
Frank, you got the clock? Here we go.
Yeah.
Reverend Carolyn. Hackensack resident, several months ago, the work group of which I am the president, we had a meeting with then-now Senator-elect Gordon Johnson. And our main concern in speaking with him was the institution of an IZO and the importance that we felt that needed in the city of Hackensack. We presented to him our issues, our reasons why we thought it was important, and also why an IZO can also have a clause in it that would give first preference to Hackensack residents, which is legal. We are hoping as the work group, because we will continue pushing this issue, that the city council will move forward in two thousand and twenty-two and instituting an IZO in the city of Hackensack and step for the rest of the community, for the county, an example, we have a county seat, and we should be the first in everything and not the last. So we have not heard anything back regarding that. We know he did send a letter to the city council. So as twenty-one ends, we're hoping that in two thousand and twenty-two we'll hear something from our city council about the institution of an IZO in the city of Hackensack, which is so very well needed. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Same to you, Ms. Davis. Thank you. Next person from the public, please.
Okay, next up, we have Anna Garcia.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a quick question. During one of the resolutions, was something approved for the sewer line repair work on Clinton Place?
Yes.
Yes.
When will that work? I don't recall any of the descriptions that being stated, and I wanted to make sure that that was approved because I live on Clinton Place, and I am adversely affected by the sewer line. Um, backup, it it holds so much water in this sewer line that it backs up into my home, and I'm unable to flush toilets, use my washing machine, do anything. And I want to know, when is this work going to start? Because it's unfair that I'm being so adversely affected by the city sewer line.
Vinnie?
Yes, Ms. Garcia, the it was approved tonight. And once it's approved, we already have a contractor, so it doesn't have to go out to bid. It's being done under emergency work with It's being done under, uh, emergency work with, uh, Sensary, so I will check on it tomorrow and have my assistant call and call you back and let you know uh, when they intend to start the work. As far as I know, it's supposed to start ASAP as soon as possible.
Yes, and I hope it's, I hope it's, well, I hope it's before the holidays because I'm adversely affected, like I said. I've been at this with the, you know, with the city for over a year now. And it's to the point where, you know, I have pictures, I have videos that I can show you how bad it is for us, for the residents on the lower half of Clinton Place.
Understood, understood, and that's one of the reasons why I'm trying to get it done as soon as possible.
Can you, please give your, please give your number to the city manager?
We have it. I have it.
Okay.
And I also would like to say thank you to the DPW workers who have come to my home and have flushed the city sewer line, they suck the water up whenever I call, it's done. But it's beyond, you know, the scope of this work is beyond what DPW can do.
Understood.
Thank you, I need your information. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Next person from the public, please.
Uh, there don't appear to be any more hands raised.
Need a motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Are there any letters to be read?
No. There was nothing.
Need a second?
Take one.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
None opposed. Okay, Steph?
Sure, good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted to start by first saying, um, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone and and thanks to everybody, um, for all the hard work that they do for our city. Um, everyone sitting here, you know, dedicates a lot of time to making sure the city runs in the right direction. It's been a long year, um, a better year. Um, but still, you know, I think we have some tough times ahead of us. Um, but just looking back at the, um, committee of the whole agenda and the presentations that were done and tonight on our agenda, um, when you look back at all the different projects being done, whether it's the parks, um, sewer separation, road paving, um, pedestrian safety, um, improvements, it just shows all the work that that goes into the city and I'm so proud to be a part of this, this group. Um, so I just wanted to thank everybody and say, have a safe, happy holiday. Um, stay safe and thanks again for everything and and thank you for, to Leo, a special thank you to Leo. Um, I know he's behind, um, a lot of, of the work with the Johnson Park, uh, project and the paving and and those were two big, um, projects on, on the agendas tonight, so, um, good job, Leo, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Kathy?
Oh, good evening, everyone. Um, also at the committee of the whole, uh, our city manager announced that there's still some remaining board openings. This is the time of the year where we go over and see what boards need opening, uh, have openings and hope to encourage people to volunteer and be part of it. Uh, first, I'd like to say thanks to all those that agreed to be reappointed. We know that, you know, these things are time consuming. We appreciate all your efforts and, you know, we're happy to report everyone that wanted to be reappointment, reappointed was, and I just wanted to make sure we let you all know how much we appreciate your hard work. Um, the city manager promised to have the other, the, the remaining board openings posted on the website. So if anyone is interested, we encourage you, you know, get involved or or or, you know, learn more about the city, it's a good way to do that. You know, take a look and see what, what board openings we have and get your information in and hopefully we can fill up any of these remaining positions on the board. Um, there were a, a number of, uh, awards that we had on the, on the docket tonight. I always like to go over some of the highlights. Um, and yes, Ms. Garcia, certainly the one to Sensary for doing the Clinton Place sewer work. Vinnie, just so you know, you know, I had asked Susan to include that in the sewer report because I did feel that when we have this award, it's, it's significant and it should be, we should go over the details. Um, but Ms. Garcia, in a nutshell, we are expediting it and this was the result of doing some preliminary analysis and some, you know, first pass, maybe final pass, which would be great, but at least getting in there and doing what they see, you know, as they do work, sometimes they find more work or additional work that has to happen to solve the problem. But we certainly want to get in there and get this work done quickly. And this involves, you know, a number of issues that they feel can be addressed and and are gonna move forward to do it. Also on for tonight, there was a, an award to New Prince for doing some additional work, uh, you know, on the Clay Street Sewer Separation Project. You know, again, as they did, you know, you never know, you think you know it's underground, but when you really don't know until you get there. So, you know, as, as always, when we find something, we're gonna fix it. We're opening the road and we find something else, we're gonna fix it. So there was an additional award there for that. Uh, also, the award was given for the turfing the field at Columbus Park. I think that was mentioned earlier at the Cal meeting, that that work was gonna be moving forward quickly. Um, and awards for, more money is being awarded for paving. Uh, they're doing, they're now gonna be doing some portions of Third Street and some portions, uh, north of Summit, I think from like Passaic to Spring Valley. So, you, you know, if you see some road closures, be patient, but it just means that progress is happening and we're getting, um, a lot of this work done. Uh, we're also moving forward to apply for, uh, an NJ DOT grant that's gonna be addressing some of the remaining issues on Prospect, especially, um, Essex to Beach, that area, and some issues that have arisen lately. So we're gonna be looking for that grant and applying for it and hopefully we get some funding so we can move forward and do those, those changes as well. Thanks, everyone, for coming. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays, whatever holidays you support in your family, we support you in enjoying them and have a happy, healthy holiday season. Everyone, be very careful, numbers in the city are going up as they are throughout the state, throughout the country, throughout the world. So everyone, please stay safe with your families and take time to enjoy and appreciate everything that we have. Have a good night.
Thank you. Leo?
Yeah, we continue working in the parts, the paving, we got the money for Summit and Third Street and all the particular street that now they be uh, destroyed really by the sewer separations, uh, they're gonna be paved and maybe by April or May. And we got a problem with the COVID again and I, I beg you to please vaccinate yourself, your family, use the mask and try to use, uh, many controls yet to try to prevent to get sick. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year for everybody. Bye.
Thank you. Jerry?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I want to like thank everyone. Um, this, this is trying a year again with the COVID spiking. I feel so bad. But the bottom line is this, we have to deal with it and go through with it. I really appreciate the mayor, the city council, the city. But most of all, we have to work hard and do what we have to do to accommodate what we have to do to, um, get through this. So again, God bless you, Merry Christmas and Happy New Years.
Same to you, Jerry, thank you. Okay, we have one big celebration in the city this week. Um, they had the grand opening ribbon cutting for, uh, the brick, which is the fourteen, fifteen story building on Main Street at one fifty one seventy. Uh, we got to tour the building and see the finished product. It is spectacular. Um, anybody who's thinking of looking for an apartment or just wants to go see them, set up a, an appointment to go look because it's, uh, it's a gem in the middle of our downtown and it's gonna generate a lot of, uh, economic growth for this city and, uh, just overall, when the retail starts to fill up, it's gonna be great. I want to talk about their COVID numbers, folks. Just this past weekend, in two days, we had ninety new cases in the city, all right, two days, all right? You can expect these numbers to go up considerably with the holidays, two holidays back to back, coming right behind us. Um, some of these numbers are, are results of parties that have already taken place. I ask that you please get yourself vaccinated. If you are fully vaccinated, please get your booster. It's important. I know some of you may be against the vaccine. I understand some of the reasoning behind that. But the numbers we're seeing, um, are, are starting to get scary again and, uh, very concerned about having shutdowns again. And, uh, TNEC already, uh, I sent an email today from TNEC that they are closing down all their public buildings, which means you're gonna close down all your sports, all your, uh, you know, recreation programs. We certainly not want to see it, but if we have to do it, we're gonna do it. So I'm gonna be meeting with the city manager tomorrow and the board of health. And, uh, I want to go over the numbers, see where we are and what she thinks and, uh, whether she thinks it's necessary to possibly pull the trigger on, on shutting down City Hall and some of our buildings. It's a, it's a very nervous time, especially doing this, going right into the holiday. But, uh, we're gonna do what we can to protect our employees and our citizens both. So with that, I know it's a little bit of negative news going into the holiday, but, uh, we need to be aware of this very, very real situation that we're dealing with. It's, uh, you all know where I work and, uh, I can tell you that it's, numbers are creeping up there tremendously as well. And those are people being hospitalized, so. So with that, I want to wish everybody a wonderful Christmas.